...tonight because we didn't have a quorum, so I'd like to call the meeting today for Thursday, May 23rd, to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Mayor Burchill.
Here.
District One, Morissette.
Here.
District Two, Yacku.
Here.
District Three, Bernard, is excused. District Four, Teawinkle.
Here.
District Five, Hoggatt.
Here.
District Six, Vanslow.
Here.
Anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on any issue that is not on the agenda tonight? If you could give us your name and address and...
My name is Jesse. Thank you, Council and Mayor, for an opportunity to say a couple things. My name is Jesse Garza. I'm the district deputy director for Congressman Sean Duffy. We opened a congressional office in Hudson. From what we understand, this will be the first congressional office in St. Craig County. We're located right downtown, 502 Second Street, Suite 202. So if there's any issues with federal issues or questions on any votes that are coming up or any deal with any of the agencies, please feel free to contact our office. Our office phone number, 715-808-8160. Just a couple of brief legislative updates. Recently, last week, in fact, the House passed what's called the National Blue Alert Act. That particular act allows the Department of Justice to set up a program similar to an Amber Alert if a police officer or safety public officer is either killed in line of duty at the moment or seriously injured and the suspect is still on the loose. It helps coordinate different agencies throughout a region, such as in this case, we have Minnesota, Wisconsin. So each state and each area or the different communities surrounding know what's going on and also the citizens are aware in order to provide information to law enforcement officers. That is currently sitting, just passed and is currently sitting in the Senate and hopefully it'll pass in the same manner as it did in the House with bipartisan support. As well, we have, Congressman had just supported a bill known as the Family Flexibility Act, which essentially it offers businesses and families to decide, determine how the overtime is used. You can use it for extra vacation time or you paid the typical time and a half on overtime dollars. And that has passed the House and is currently in the Senate. So if you have any questions for me, I will leave some business cards and thank you for the time, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda? Yes, if you could come up to the microphone, give us your name and address, please.
Well, I'm new at this. I've just, my name is Judith Taylor and I live in Red Cedar Canyon. And I'm just curious what, how the landscaping is going to go in where, on Crestview where the welcome center was.
Okay.
I'd like to know when that, when the landscape committee is going to meet.
Mr. Darleit.
I talked to Judith this morning on her telephone. I mentioned to her that upon receipt of the development plans, landscaping will be, you know, it minimally has to meet city standards. But then it won't be until the development plans are submitted to the City of Hudson. At that time, we'll review those. Now, I feel that process goes through application and council, there's at least two public hearings and a review.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council that's, and any of them that's not on the agenda? Okay, let's move on. Consent agenda items. Madam Clerk?
To approve the regular meeting minutes of May 6, 2013. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $394,396.68. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of 35 regular operator licenses for the period May 24, 2013 to June 30, 2015, contingent on payment of any outstanding debt that's owed to the city.
Can you pull those, please?
And to approve the issuance, are you talking about pulling the temporary two? Or is that okay?
No, just the regular operators' licenses.
Okay. To approve the issuance of one temporary operator's license to be used July 3 through 6, 2013, at the Hudson Booster Days event in Lakefront Park. To approve the renewal and issuance of an amusement device owner's license to Scott J. Furlong, Red Wing, Minnesota, doing business as Leisure Entertainment, and permits for five amusement device machines located in Pudges, in Hudson, for the period July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014. To approve the renewal and issuance of a flea mall market license to Brian J. Bessler, Apple Valley, Minnesota, doing business as Abigail Page Antiques at 503 Second Street, Hudson, for the period May 24, 2013 to June 30, 2015. To place on file the quarterly report of the Water Utility Director, the semi-annual report of the IT Coordinator, the monthly report of the Finance Officer, and the Public Utility Commission minutes of May 14, 2013. To approve an easement agreement with Clyde and Jill Hatch to construct a fence at 70 East Canyon Drive within an easement area contingent on execution and recording of an easement agreement. And that is all.
Move for approval.
There a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yacku?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Teawinkle?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, the first order of business then would be application for operator's license. We have roughly...
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five in front of you.
Mr. Mayor, I will recuse myself.
Okay. Is there approval? Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The temporary was not pulled out, was it? Next item on the agenda is to consider funding source for tablet devices for common council.
You had asked that I research some possible options to fund the devices. Two options I came up with would be either the short-term capital funds that were approved in the 2013 operating budget or the potential C funds would be one of the other options.
What was our total amount that we had for that?
Approximately $8,500.
Okay.
Well, wouldn't we rather pay them off right away instead of bonding for them? Or is that...
Short-term capital is in the regular operating budget.
Oh, it is.
It won't be bonded for. That's like the squad vehicles that we put in the regular budget.
I'm just not comfortable with this, sorry. I just feel like we have, I said this last time, I'll say it again, I could find somewhere else to put $8,500 right now. We are a tight budget. I don't see why we need to do this at this time, so.
I'll move to approve we use the short-term capital funds 2013 in the amount of $8,500.
Okay.
One second.
Okay. Discussion.
Well, I kind of support the tablets, but I think Mary's got a point about spending $8,500 at this particular time when the budgets are tight and we're only halfway through the year. So I do have a concern about spending money right at this point in time.
Okay.
But I do support the tablets.
Anyone else have any comments, suggestions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Next item on the agenda is consider refiguring council chambers issue sheet. I believe Mr. Morissette brought that forward.
Yeah, the design on back is a sketch of what I was thinking of upgrading these chambers to kind of more or less look a little more respectable, kind of project a different image for the council. I did have somebody come in and estimate, but I don't see Tom is here, so I don't know the numbers.
When they were in today, they weren't, they indicated that they wouldn't be able to give a firm number.
Did they give a ballpark?
No, they didn't to me, anyway. They might have to shut, but they didn't say anything to me.
Okay. So what it basically is, is having the council tables on a raised platform back there with each of the members, the mayor, and then what it has, also does is allow the ability for cables and cords and any electronics that we may upgrade to go underneath there without going into cement floor here, saves money. And then off to the side would be department heads, a podium here, and then you could use the projectors in the front, on front of the thing, kind of similar to the River Falls type of situation. And this does allow, if need be, to bring back voting machines back down here.
We, did you talk with all the cable folks whether or not we needed to do any...
Not yet, that was premature, I thought.
Okay, all right. Just wondering if there was going to be any cost involved in that, if we, if we were to do that. Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to be the negative one tonight, I can just feel it.
So before you say anything, I guess what I'm doing is presenting this to go, if we need to go any further and look at and get a plan and a design and a cost.
Okay, now I can speak?
No.
So my negative about it is this, this is, the social worker in me says, I don't like the raised concept because I feel like we're looking down on people. And I don't think we are in any shape, way, or form should be looking down on people. Also, the fact that it's, we're in a row like that, I mean, if I'm sitting where I'm sitting, I cannot even see Kurt's face. And, you know, I'm a person where I like to actually see what I'm discussing, so as my passion raises throughout the meeting, people know I'm not really mad.
Well, obviously, this is, this is my first crack. I mean, so there is obviously room to be flexible somewhat of the design, to look at each other if you really want to look at each other.
Well, yeah, I just would prefer to not be in a straight line where I feel like I'm going to, like, Supreme Court or something here, you know? I mean, I would just like to be on the same level as everybody in the gallery and looking, I like that we're having, this is a discussion format.
And truly, the format for raising it up was to allow us to do the mechanicals of, instead of digging into the cement floor.
Yeah, do another way, though.
Okay. Anybody else? Mary, do you have any other comments?
No, just that I don't know how the funding again for this is going to, once again, I'm on a funding thing, so I'm just...
Okay. Anybody on this side?
I'd be interested in seeing an updated design and how much would it actually cost. I think a couple of things I like about it is that you're more interacting with the gallery. I understand the discussion format and I do like that as well. But just kind of curious to know how much something like that would cost and whether it's even really feasible or not, so.
Anyone else want to make a comment or...
I'll just say that my first thought was, what Mary brought up was, you know, many, many of our issues end up in conversations and it is tough to do it when you're side by side down the road, so.
Okay.
I personally like this, this setup.
All right.
I'm, I like, I like being able to see Randy.
Yeah.
I bet you just... I presume he would just go. I would like to keep it the way it is because I think it does allow discussion amongst the council.
Okay. Well, what's your thought about, we haven't, we won't spend any money by going out and getting an estimate? So let's, if we can get a cost estimate, or do you feel like there's no reason to even bother to go do that? That's entirely up to you folks. Because we have an odd number of folks here tonight, so it'll be...
I'd like to see them, just to get a figure. If it doesn't cost anything, can't hurt and we can shelve it if that's the case and for a later date.
Well, can you get the figure, can you get the estimate so that we're not in a line then, so that we're still in some sort of a discussion?
Maybe a contractor could have...
Yeah, this is just my doodling here, so.
Jeez.
Randy's doodling.
I don't like looking at you guys.
Pardon? I don't, I mean, we would have to, you know, like, if we went out some further, it wouldn't be an issue. We have to make sure, like I said, make sure we leave room for this room for elections and that's not all that often, but, or potentially if it could be something that could be movable, you know, somehow modular that could be movable, because we still do need this, you know, room for...
Part of the reason also was because there is court in here and I know that, that would have sufficed them for that setup.
All right.
Yeah, but that's once a week and we have more than just council meetings, you know, between the subcommittee meetings and stuff, so.
Well, I think it's probably a good idea to see what, they're out, they've already been here. They were here today just to look and, you know, they didn't, it's my understanding, like I said, I didn't...
Yeah, I agree.
That they didn't have time to get, put together an estimate.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Federal grant from Mr. Duffy's office.
I don't think so. All right, good, we'll move on. Consider land use agreement between the City of Hudson, the School District of Hudson for proposed varsity baseball field press box and concession stand building improvement project. Mr. Darnold.
Good evening.
Good evening.
2012, the Hudson dugout club approached the school district in the City of Hudson to request cooperation in building a new press box, concession stand, and storage facility at the varsity baseball field. In 1992, the city and school district entered into a joint development agreement. Basically, the school brought, bought the property where the two baseball fields are at from the City of Hudson. So there's been a long-term cooperative agreement between the City of Hudson and the school district to develop these areas. And that 1992 agreement spelled out what some of the costs, such as grading, storm drainage was responsibility, maintenance of the fields were. But with the baseball field being established, the concession stand has limited area that can go. They're going to move the, if approved, would move the backstop up a little bit closer towards home plate, add additional room for the press box concession stand. That would be placed entirely on the school property. But some of the bleach areas would encroach a little bit slightly into the city property, but those are movable structures, facilities. So from that standpoint, it's not a, it's not a permanent place. So this agreement, basically, is very similar to the force, school force agreement, where the school force is partly on city property, partly on school property. This is an agreement for the school district to use the property from the north edge of the parking lot, north to the south edge of the baseball field or the school property. So basically, they identify that, the school district has applied for variance. In 2010, the city changed from that zoning classification from R1, one-family residential to public, which increased the side yard setback from three feet to 30 feet. So all of a sudden, you know, the school district's caught up and not being able to meet side yard setback. I've assisted the school district in writing the variance application. That'll go to the Board of Appeals on June 11th, so hopefully that variance will be granted by the Board of Appeals at that time. And so I don't know if there's any questions.
Anybody have any questions on this?
This, this, sorry.
Yep.
So the agreement, when I first read it, I read it as if we have to provide funding for part of it, but I'm understanding we don't.
The dugout club and Tim Erickson, Jim Sakesglower here from the school district, Rich Myers here from the dugout club. When this first started, when this discussion first started, there was a general discussion on a three-party, school district and the city, and we agreed this needed to be a two-party situation. Dugout Club's going to construct, pay for the cost of the improvements, and it's given to the school district. So the school district will be the owner, so there's no city cost involved here. School district will be responsible for paying building permits, just like any area of development. And so our costs can only be for the inspection costs, which are paid for by the building inspection fee. There'd be no extension of sanitary sewer and water to this facility. So from there, there's no, you know, there's no other inspections other than the normal building inspection considerations.
So have you ever considered selling this land to the school since it's so...
I think we did.
Well, I mean, we, you know, the property that the baseball field was city property at one time and we sold it to the school district. I guess your question, do we want to try to sell the area from the, from the parking lot north to the school or not? I mean, they've been using it for years.
Right.
And it's, I guess at this point, this was the most efficient way of going.
No, I don't have a problem with this, I'm just thinking future, you know, as, you know.
But the school district didn't come and ask us if they could buy the property. That was, that discussion never took place.
And it's never been requested.
Any other questions?
Well, I'll just say the baseball team is what took their confidence, so just polish up their field for them to look nice.
Yep.
Since they are champions.
Yep.
I'm in favor of it.
Yep. Looks like a good deal for us. Increase the, it looks good.
So I'll move for approval.
All right.
On the concept is what we're, I don't...
For the use agreement, the concept was reviewed by the park board back in January of 2013.
Okay. I'll move for the use agreement.
Second.
Any other discussion or any discussion on it? More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny, you're still right there. Consider a three-way party, a third-party design engineering service contract between the City of Hudson, Wisconsin, Department of Transportation, and Short Elliott Hendrickson, S.E.H., the design engineering consultant for the Wisconsin Street Project, 11th Street to Vine Street.
The three-party engineering services contract between the City of Hudson, Wisconsin, Department of Transportation, Short Elliott Hendrickson, which is a consulting engineering firm, is pretty much a standard agreement issued by the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Again, 20% of the cost is responsibility of the City of Hudson. There's what's called authorized services and unauthorized servicers. The, if, I'm not, shouldn't say unauthorized, if authorized service, services. And so there's two degrees of cost. The city share for the authorized services is about $17,000. And if authorized, which means they have to be approved by this Wisconsin Department of Transportation for those services can move ahead, and those are more tied to surveying, title work if there's right of way that may be needed for this. It's the full intent of this project, to keep this project within the existing right of ways of Wisconsin Street. There's no intent to go out and have to buy property or acquire property for this, for this project. Again, Mr. Dan Pensgover from S.E.H. is here tonight to answer any questions. But again, this is the design service contract for the Wisconsin Street Project, which the City of Hudson has responsibility for 20%, 20% of that, or a little less than $21,000, up to a little less than $21,000. And I asked Neil what funding is available. There's still approximately $27,000 left in that project fund, so we can cover the cost of this, of this contract.
This isn't unexpected or anything like that?
Oh, absolutely not.
It was going to happen all the time, so.
No, this is a standard...
Part of the project.
Standard DOT type of agreement.
Okay.
I'll move, we recommend the, up to $21,000 for this engineering contract.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Did everybody read that?
All right, and before you take the vote, I'm remiss in leaving one thing out.
Yep.
The contract currently authorizes Neil to be the contact person. Like, for, you know, Neil headed up the committee. I think you're perhaps Devon, myself, or Tom would probably be the better contact. Under this contract, I guess whoever you want to assign that responsibility to is...
Why don't the three of you decide who you want to do it? Doesn't, I mean, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
All right, is that okay with the council?
No.
Let the staff decide? Any other questions or comments?
Just glad I didn't have to read this on an iPod, iPad.
Yep.
It's way faster on an iPod.
That's not on the agenda, you can't talk about it.
I understand.
I'm just kidding. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Opposed? Motion carries.
Good luck.
Can always print it out, Mary.
Okay, moving on, we have a, consider a reclass, a temporary wage increase for interim city mechanic. I believe we've had somebody filling that role right now.
Yeah, Tom asked that I bring this forward. We've had an individual that stepped up in the interim here and done some mechanic work. Tom approached me and I told him to put forth what he proposed. He's asking for a dollar an hour, but just for those hours that he actually worked as the mechanic. And when the new mechanic is hired, you know, he would go back to his other duties. So Tom asked me to bring it forward.
It's in his budget or he...
Well, it would be in the budget because we don't, wouldn't have, not have an employee there a couple of months.
I talked to Tom briefly this morning, or the second, and he pointed out that it'll be about a 10-week gap that we're without a mechanic. So he said, you know, it's easily within the money that's available.
Is that a motion?
I'll move for, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a request for reclassification of Police Department Account Clerk, Chief Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, there was two issues on this issue sheet. One was an update of the job description for account clerk, records account clerk three for the police department. I added on, on the second page, you will see, taking on administrative responsibilities, duties, I felt that was necessary to do prior to asking for the reclassification. So what I'd asked the council to do first is take that into consideration before we move on to the next step. Even if we don't move the person on, I'd like to have that reclassification in there just in case it should come up at a later date.
Everybody understand that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for reclassification.
Sir, second.
Second.
Could we make it effective June 1st? Because that'll tie then in with...
Sure.
Okay. I thought we were just going on the, changing on the job description first.
We are.
Okay.
Reclassification, right?
Well, I want to do the reclassification, but I wanted to do the job description first before we moved on to the reclassification.
Oh, I misunderstood you. We'll go with that one first. I'll make a motion to approve the job description.
Okay, that's what I thought you did.
Me, too.
Me, too.
I did second that.
I think the issue that Devon was pointing out is if there was a change, it would be June 1st.
Right.
On the next item.
On the next item.
Right, right.
Fiscal...
Any discussion on the job description change? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item would be the reclassification of employees.
Reclassification. As you can tell, Melanie Horberg, my administrative assistant, was out for almost three weeks on a medical leave and during that time, it became very apparent that we needed to have somebody step up and do her jobs. Jess Genske, who's my next account clerk, stepped in. She has taken on some of the other responsibilities. She's starting to learn how to do the voucher system so she can pay the police department bills. She's also did a public safety meeting for us. She's also working on getting her noted Republican. I believe that should have been done here within the last week. So she's stepped up to the plate and doing a lot of extra work that will come into this being if she gets us a count clerk three. The other thing I didn't mention in here and I should have is that the police department has increased its activity levels over the last five years by 4% annually, which means we have generating more reports, more tickets that are coming in the office staff take on. Jess does the majority of that work, freeing up Jenny so that she can answer the phones and then meet with the public at the front counter. So this would also help offset her taking on more responsibilities in that area as well. So my request would be to reclassify her to account clerk three, move her up on the pay scale to $9.40 an hour. We can find that money in my budget. I've got overtime, cost in administration for the count clerks. It's a small amount. It should be able to make it through the rest of the year, not a problem.
Okay.
So basically, she'd be moving from the end of the scale here to the middle of the scale on the next level.
Correct. Correct. It's only like a twelve, it's only like a twelve cent increase this year.
It's not nineteen dollars and forty cents an hour?
You said nine forty.
Well.
It's nineteen forty.
It's nineteen forty.
Nineteen forty. I typed on my phone. I thought I had nineteen forty on there.
It is nineteen forty.
It says nineteen forty.
Oh, I'm sorry, nineteen forty.
I, I'll move for approval of the reclassification, beginning June first.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion on it?
Yeah, I just want to add a note. I'm glad we're doing this. This was what I was trying to do last year with cross-training and stuff, and this is how we retain good employees, so.
Good point. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, issue sheet, taxi cab, consider taxi cab service license and taxi cab driver's license. We have one in here from Kilimanjaro, and, uh, we have staff recommendation to approve the taxi cab license to Kilimanjaro Taxi Service and, uh, two operators. And it recommended, pardon?
That would be for the license period July first, two thousand thirteen to June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
These are renewals, correct?
Yes.
And we have a copy of their insurance on the back?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the next item on there I added, uh, yesterday because when we approved the mooring, uh, in the motion, there was no source of funding. So what this is, is, uh, we have two bids for the, I think we had approved, or we thought we approved twelve thousand dollars roughly. I believe that was a dollar amount. And Mr. Zappa came in at seventy-one hundred dollars. But we didn't have a, uh, Zappa Brothers came in at seventy-one hundred. We didn't have a location where we were taking the funds, and that'll come out of the park funds. Mooring's is a source of approved project.
The mooring, the mooring.
Correct, mooring's. It's, it's still a park.
The mooring fees go into a segregated fund. It'll come out of that fund.
It's coming out of that fund.
Correct. But it is a park trust fund.
I'll move for approval, uh, to, uh, give the project to Zappa Brothers for seven thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars out of the mooring park funds.
Is there a second? Now, Tom is not here to, um, uh, does this cover all of it?
Yes, as well. As far as I know, it was what we bid out, yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the, uh, agenda is the amendment to, uh, agreement with the Roberts Fire Department. Chief Frye?
This is the, uh, this is the automatic aid agreement coming back at you. Did some negotiation with the town of Hudson. The town of Hudson now is accepted to pay for the calls where the fire department goes to the town of Warren. We estimated about twelve calls, roughly twelve calls a year. And, uh, that total dollars is about eighty-four, eighty-five hundred dollars. Uh, the city's portion will be about sixty-four hundred dollars credit back to the city that the town of Hudson would pay. So, um, and they have accepted, advisory board has, uh, saw this and approved of it, and now it's before you again.
Anyone have any questions for Chief Frye? Good job on this, Jim. It was, uh, you did a good job to get all this stuff, and I think it's good cooperation between the town, the city, and everyone else. Keeps the, uh, fire protection, uh, level for some of those folks out in the township at a lower level. It should help them.
I'll move for approval.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next item is a consideration, a request for a pedal cab and pedal tours. Issue sheet from Chief Jensen, I believe.
Well, we brought this through public safety because we've had a couple requests to begin a pedal cab operation in the city of Hudson, and also a pedal tour, um, operation here in the city as well, one that's similar to the one that's over in Stillwater. I, I brought it forward to public safety to bring it to their attention that we currently don't have an ordinance that prohibits this. And what I'm asking the city council to consider is, is looking at having an ordinance put into place so that we can at least regulate or control these operations. Currently, right now, there's nothing that says that they can't operate. They can be operating in our cities. Um, we don't have any requirements that restrict them from doing this. So I felt it might be appropriate to at least consider this. I know that some other jurisdictions in the state of Wisconsin, such as Madison, does have a pedal cab ordinance. I did pass it on to Catherine. And, uh, maybe that would be something that we should at least explore.
Okay. Recommend, go ahead.
Yeah, well, we recommend to move forward with explo, exploration, so I, am I assuming that you want, then Catherine, to start writing some, are you?
An ordinance.
Yep.
Right.
An ordinance.
Yeah, putting an ordinance together for that.
Where we're at, yeah. So I think that's important, just to simply regulate, not to prohibit, but just to.
Yeah.
Make sure we're following state laws and stuff.
Correct, and that way we can govern, obviously, safety equipment and so forth that's being used so that we just don't have any fly-by-night operation coming in that we.
And where they can, um, where they can travel and like.
And so forth, correct.
I, I encouraged, uh, not Third Street Hill, the off-limits of pedicabs, if we can get that into ordinance somehow.
Third or second?
Or second.
The Third, the Third Street Hill.
All coming down the hill.
Right.
And up it, or up it.
Correct.
I would like to see that in ordinance where we have some streets that we know are dangerous, like that.
Oh, okay. Well, Marty and I'll.
We can work on that, and then we can bring it back to public safety when it's ready.
Sounds good.
So do we need a motion, or?
Sure. I think we should.
Yeah.
I'll move to, uh, approve the drafting of ordinance for pedal cabs and pedal tours.
Well, pedal tours are different. You want to do that separately?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just pedal cab.
Pedal cabs, yeah.
All right.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item, we have a consideration to include.
Tours?
Did I miss something?
We can do.
Yeah, no, you're gonna do.
Tours.
Tours.
Okay, I'm sorry.
There's distinct difference.
All right, go.
Well, obviously, uh, there's a gentleman here from, um, Stillwater, runs a business in Stillwater, the pedal cab tours. They run them Stillwater. Uh, they're very popular in Milwaukee, as well as over in Minneapolis and St. Paul. Um, I think he wants to come forward and maybe say a few words about what he's interested in doing. I thought maybe this is something we could tie into the pedal cab business as well, as I think if you regulate them both, because you got to have a driver that operates the tour as well, if we can.
Oh, we'll have an ordinance.
Correct, that's why I'm saying we can just.
But they'd be different.
Well, they'd be different, but they may be a different section of that.
Yeah.
Ordinance, correct, so.
Do you want to, sir, do you want to come up and talk about this? You've talked to us before, haven't you? Or haven't you?
No.
Okay.
Mayor Council, thanks for giving me the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Bill Booth. I reside, uh, seven months in the city of Woodbury, and I reside the other five months on my boat in downtown Stillwater. I haven't been there yet. The weather hasn't cooperated, but we're, we're giving it a good shot. I'm representing this evening Patricia Wolf, uh, who is the owner of the multi-person vehicle, quote-unquote, uh, that you are seeing in the brochure. Uh, we've been functioning in, in the city of, uh, Stillwater, uh, late last fall and into, uh, the, uh, the current session. Let me be perfectly clear. There is no mandate that says, before you get on there, you got to be able to drink. And we understand totally that the city of Still, or the city of Hudson says, I'm sorry, you can't do that. We have no problems with that. You know, we've had youngsters that have been on there with their grandfathers, their grandmothers, birthday parties that have been on there where the kids are there, and it works out very well. In the city of Stillwater, it's a, if alcohol is allowed or brought forward, it's a B Y O B, because the state of Minnesota prohibits us from selling. Keep in mind that Ms. Wolf, her great-grandfather, great-great-grandfather was Joseph Wolf. And as you come into Stillwater from going north on the right-hand side, Luna Rosa, the caves that are there, the caves that he actually carved out with pickaxes and, and dynamite. We went through, uh, three city council meetings with the city of Stillwater, and they set up some rules and regulations, if you will. Uh, they needed to see the, the insurance. They needed to see, they had to issue us a permit to be on the streets, make sure that, that we function like a vehicle. One of the police officers from Stillwater PD rode with us. Um, there are headlights, there are horns, there are turn signals, there's brake lights, there's running lights. It's all the same things that you find, you know, on a car. Um, at the last meeting of your Public Safety Commission, I told Chief Jensen that I would provide for him, and I'm assuming for you, all of the paperwork that we had to go through in the city of Stillwater, which would hopefully give you an understanding that we're just not coming in and saying, wow. Uh, and that you don't have to go and reinvent the, the wheel from the beginning. Would we want to be in Hudson? Yeah, I think so. Are there some steps that we need to take, as well as I'm sure steps that you need to take? You bet. Um, I'm not that familiar with Hudson. I know that the, the hills and valleys in the city of Stillwater are such that, uh, it's interesting when you start out with the people pedaling, and there's five on each side that pedal, and three in the back that can sit, pick on the peddlers. But they, they'll go for a block or so, and they'll, this is a piece of cake, until I make the turn, because I'm the driver. And we head up a little bit of an incre, an incline, then they're yelling at me to hit that little pedal under, under my right foot, which acts, it'll take the six batteries in series and give them a break to take the heat off their thighs. So we'd, we'd like to take a look at what Hudson has got to provide. Listen to what you feel as though are, no, we don't want you on the main streets, this street or that street. Uh, it's sort of a starting process for us. So anything that, uh, that, uh, we can do to help you, we'd be more than happy to do so, and, uh, I thank you again for allowing me to speak.
Any questions? Thank you.
I, can I just make something clear?
Sure.
The, it's not the city of Hudson that, um, says noted alcohol is a state law, so that's why alcohol would not be allowed.
Okay. Do you want, uh, Catherine to take a look at the Stillwater stuff and go from there, too?
I mean, if you want me to.
Do we need to make another motion for that?
Then you have it in the minutes that I was actually authorized.
Uh, move to have Catherine review the Stillwater ordinances regarding pedicabs and, uh, uh, work on drafting one for the city of Hudson.
Sir, second? Any discussion?
I think it would be neat if we can make it safe.
Yep. Marty, you okay? I mean.
Yep, I, right now, from what I've heard, I haven't heard any complaints. I, I've talked to the Stillwater chief a little briefly about it, and he hasn't heard any complaints. And I have heard from some citizens in the city that they're kind of excited about seeing this coming over, so.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is the, uh, issue sheet on public safety, uh, financial plan. Mary?
Yeah, so we, uh, went, uh, we were asked by the mayor to look at the five-year financial plan, which we did. We didn't change anything from the original plan, except we did add into public safety building. At our first go at it, we were unaware that we were supposed to be the ones doing that. We thought that was coming from administration. Um, the only, and change that I would like to see is, and this is going to come out of the field for you guys, but obviously I couldn't talk to you about it, is that, um, when we went with the thirteen million, we were going off the plan from years ago that was made up. And I just, I assumed, because I wasn't on council at the time, that that plan was approved by council, and it wasn't. So I'd like to see, um, I'd like to see the five-year plan change if we, if, if everyone agrees to, to the purchase of the land first. And then at that point, in the next five years or whatever, if we redraft and figure out what type of building we'd want, because I don't know, necessarily know if what was drawn up back then is something that we'd want to look at going forward. There was, it was quite extensive with like a, uh, gun range in there and, uh, workout facilities, and I was unaware that, now that we have the gun range here in town and stuff like that, there could be some serious changes made to that original plan. So, um, I don't know what council thinks about that, just putting in the five-year plan. The two million for land purchase, um, by two thousand fifteen, for now. Slowing it down.
That's, that seems, uh, we have been, uh, having discussions, preliminary discussions with the county, as far as some, uh, sharing of structure and land and trying to have some joint agreements on how we could possibly work together to utilize a building and land out on, on the government site, uh, by the government center, excuse me. So, um, I, I think, uh, you know, there's nothing, uh, firm or, but we're ha, we're continuing to have discussions. They have some need for expansion. And we have some need for expansion as far as, uh, fire, a second fire location, and possibly a police building. Marty, when we did the remodel for the police, uh, do you remember the cost? Was it less than a half a million? For just the police, uh, on the new building?
On, yeah.
Yep.
On the new building, I was given approximately two hundred thousand dollars to work with, and we brought it in at like a hundred and fifty, I believe, or a hundred and seventy-five, somewhere in there.
And if you look at, uh, the remodeling of existing building, the estimate was one point three million dollars?
Yeah.
So Marty, you did really well on that.
That's all I was given.
Yeah. You would have spent it if you, no, I'm kidding.
No, I'm just kidding.
So.
No.
So I, I can tell you that, you know, these were pretty aggressive numbers.
Yeah.
Based on, was that two thousand eight, Devon? Do you remember?
They moved in two thousand ten.
Was it two thousand?
Oh, this?
This, yeah.
No, the, that was prior to me. I was two thousand ten.
I want to say it was eight or nine.
Eight or nine. Is that right, Danny? You think you're, yep? Okay.
So, and my mistake was I, we didn't review them because I thought they were already approved in the past for a future build-out, so that's why I didn't bring them into safety. So that's why I'd like to adjust this issue sheet.
And anybody, what do anybody think about that? Two million dollars gets us a pretty nice piece of land.
Yeah, do we, do we know well what the county timeline is as far as what they plan to do?
No.
Well, uh, I, I would say in the next five years, there, yeah, they, they've got some issues with courthouse security and a, uh, fourth courthouse or fifth, uh, courtroom. Another judge. Um, and they don't have the room there, and, again, everything's in preliminary about moving that, the whole judicial system. It's really tough. There's only two, two of the, uh, courtrooms that have direct access from the jail. Otherwise, they have to bring folks in through the outer, so they, they're trying to solve that problem.
It sounds like it might be to expand the building and include another area for us, and then.
Yep.
Think about it. That'd be ideal, as far as transport and stuff. Wouldn't be very far.
No. And then there's some sharing of, of resources and training rooms and those kinds of things, uh.
So that's why I'd like.
The only question I have is if we take the building off, out of the five-year plan, will be, still be in step with the county if they decide to move forward with this? And, and, you know, so that's not lost sight of.
Yep.
Right.
That's the only question I have. If, if, if all of a sudden the county decides to move forward, and the city's not prepared to move, do we lose that opportunity because we don't have the funding?
Well, I think we could take the funding from, we could put it in the capital budget if we need to, if.
We can change it anytime we want.
Yeah, we can change it.
We're trying to do a long-range.
Sure.
Deal, so if something comes up and we want to make an addition to it, we, the council can make that change if they so desire.
It's just a shot in the dark. Are we going to expand? How much? Is it going to be three million, five million, eight million? It's just too hard to.
Yeah, I just don't want to miss the opportunity should the county decide to move forward and, and the city not be in a position to go with them.
Well, that's why I think by having the purchase of the land in there, that sets us up for the next step. I mean, if we're going to buy the land, we better intend to use it.
Yep.
So.
That would be wise.
Yes.
So, but you know, one of the. This is not, I'm sorry, uh, not part of the five-year, because in this study, the August two thousand nine, was that eight and a half million for forty-one thousand square feet combined, police fire, and that's why we added money and went with the thirteen.
Right, but now that, if you look at that plan, it's, there is so much in there that they probably wouldn't put this time around, you know. We, we, there's, there's certain things in there that I don't think they would put in there, and if we are going to start, if we are going to have some sort of, um, uh, uh, cooperation with the county and, and have something that's coordinated with them, it's going to change the entire layout.
Marty, how many, you have eighteen thousand square feet roughly now? Yep.
I mean, think about that. We'd have a totally different layout if we're up there and the county actually goes in with us and we configure something.
So what I, what I'm saying is that, um, if roughly half the building, um, if the rest of it is EMS and fire, a lot of that is, is storage and versus office, and it seems that that two oh five is a pretty steep storage for, uh, units. That seems awful steep on square foot.
Mm-hmm.
Versus the office of a police department with all the offices and those kinds of things.
I'm okay with it, as long as we.
Yep.
Are prepared to move when the county moves.
Well, and I think during discussion of public safety, if I're any mess, thought they might only need like three million to exp, to expand, and that was part of the thirteen million, if I recall. So, I mean, if you're that, I mean, if we were that concerned and we want to put a small number in, like a three million for, and just reduce it, to just keep it on the radar, um, that's up to councilor, I don't know. Maybe I'm.
Well, it's not a commitment of funds. I, I'd rather err on a little, on the higher side a little bit, because, um, costs change, the county might change their mind. I mean, you know, we don't want to get caught too short-sighted in the budgeting process, because I'm like, oh, now we can't take advantage of the opportunity that we've sort of been counting on. So I guess cutting it all the way back to that number seems, I don't know, seems like too much. Could just go with the original number and leave it at that, the eight-four.
I'd agree. The only question that I do have is, and a food for thought, is why are we going to base our decisions on their timeframe? We should have a.
We're not. Our decision will be to purch, we are, we have in our timeframe to purchase land by two thousand fifteen, whether it's the government center land, whether it's somewhere else. whether it's the government center land, whether it's somewhere else, we don't know.
Okay, so in two years, if they're not ready, we will be...
We, in our, the public safety five-year financial plan is to have a purchase, is allocating $2 million to purchase land by 2015, which to me says we're moving forward with something, and it's going to happen because we're purchasing this land. And if I were still on council at the time, I would no way vote to purchase land unless we're also going to start a build-out.
I agree, I agree, but I'm just saying, as long as we continue that path, if the county backs out and doesn't move forward with their thing or...
Well, that doesn't, that's my point. It doesn't have to mean necessarily that parcel of land, you know?
Well, it seems like we need to keep the plan, our independent plan moving forward.
Right. Which is what we're doing.
And if they come into it, great.
Yep. Which is why the first step is to buy land.
Yeah, we have to have a blueprint.
Is this the same land that they were going to give us, or is that different?
They were never going to give us any.
No, we were never going to get, they're never giving.
They were never going to give us any land.
What was the last thing, like, what was the $2,000 chunk of land up there?
That was rent.
Back country.
Just a little bit of side land.
Yeah.
Okay.
Neil, how much do we have right now?
That was to remove no trespassing signs.
Thirty.
I have everything based upon 2013 costs with inflators. And with this, with the funds, including 2 million for 2015, 2,000, 2 mil, or 13 million for 2016, we're in the range of $34 million.
Yeah, see?
And, you know, I think the intention with the plan is that it gets revisited every year. You know, it's a five-year plan, but it's a rolling five-year plan. So, I think, you know, it's the type of thing that you can adapt on, and the intention is to adapt on a short-term basis in case other needs come out.
So, the 2 million inflation is what?
Well, you know, the 2 million inflated comes 2 million 80,000 dollars.
Yeah, see?
But in that 34 million, you have what, 13 million for public safety, roughly?
Well, it'd be actually, you know, more than that.
Yep, because of inflation.
With inflation, it comes to like 15, 8 for the building.
Okay.
You know, 300,000 for police, you know, there, you know, 1 point, almost 1.7 million for fire.
Right.
Yep. So, folks, that's way over half of what our...
Yep.
Do you think that's even reasonable to assume that we would ask the taxpayers to pay that? Maybe we did, maybe it is, I don't know.
Ideally, no.
Right. So, let's be, I don't want to say let's be realistic here, but...
Right, which is why I want to reiterate that I thought that plan was approved.
Okay.
We were just reinserting what we thought was, what I thought was approved, not what... So, it wasn't, to me, it's not realistic to, if it wasn't approved, that's why I would like to scrap it, just start with the purchase of land and then figure it out from there.
It'd be a fair question. Marty, can I ask you a question if you want to come up? And you can answer this any way you want. I know you'll answer. Your facilities that you have right now, 18, roughly 18,000 square feet, are they adequate for what you're doing today?
Correct, they are, more than adequate.
Okay.
We have enough space that if we have to expand, like patrol area or detectives area, we can expand into it.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. So, well, one last question. And are you satisfied with that space?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, that's 8 million dollars of, not, I guess it isn't all, that's everything, but there's a significant dollar figure out of that number. So, what I think Mary is getting at is makes sense.
So, do we need to make a motion in for this, or was this just going to be...
Sure.
Okay, so I'd like to move that we put in the public safety five-year financial plan to allocate $2 million into 2015 year for purchase of land for public safety needs, public safety building.
Okay.
Second, I'll second that motion.
Let's, any discussion? Do you feel comfortable with that? I know that, but again, I like Neil's idea that we'll take a look at it again and see where we're at.
This is simply a placement into the plan.
Yep.
Just like we did at Public Works, everyone did, but we didn't, we didn't consider a public safety building because...
We said this is what we'd like to do.
To get it on the radar.
Yeah.
So, if a parcel comes available before that?
Sure.
Sure.
And we could say we need to bond for that, those dollars to get it going now?
Yeah.
Okay. Was there a motion, a second?
Yeah, Rich seconded it.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Park Board, considering view site layout and cost to add to existing rock wall structure at Williams Park.
This was bid out, the money is in the budget. Park Board just asked that we send it through the council.
Anything to add, Kurt?
No, you know, one thing Tom mentioned to the park board and to me today is, you know, this is very popular park, and all of his feedback that he gets, these climbing walls are what attracts the kids. So, the fact that the money is budgeted, the park board hopes that it moves forward.
Any discussion, thoughts or questions?
I think it's great. I move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Comments?
It's not big enough for me to play on, but that's okay.
I think you'd get hurt, Chad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Karen, update on projects.
We had a little later start in the construction season this year than last year, but John told me that there's a frost warning out for tonight or something.
Isn't that awesome?
But they'll still be working.
Really?
Yes.
Oh, Lord.
Anyway, public projects, Lake Malibu, we're going to continue working on that from last winter. So, we'll be doing some fence work, riprap, working on the driveway, some landscaping. And the contractor's been very good working with the adjacent homeowner, so that's going well. Hudson Center, right off of 94 where the old rest area was, we have the sanitary sewer and the water mains been installed. And this week, they've been working on installing the storm sewer. And Red Cedar Canyon, we have areas that are under construction on the south end of that development. The sanitary sewer and services have been installed on one of the cul-de-sacs, Dunbari Pass. We've had services installed in the townhomes area, and also in that area, the townhomes have been going vertical, going up. That's the rental area in the southwest corner. And on the street project that we're going to be designing, we had, the street cores were completed, and the preliminary field investigation has been done.
So, do you want to give us a little result, or haven't you got the results yet?
The street cores, I just got those yesterday, Tuesday. Just got those Tuesday, and they're looking good.
Good.
It looks like there is some nice, there's some areas of concern, but overall, the street cores are nice and thick, and we could do some milling.
Knock on plywood or whatever we got here.
Yeah. So, can I ask a question about Red Cedar Canyon? Is the, with the sewer and sanitary sewer and stuff being installed in the water, is it the deep, like digging, is all that done, like, or is there, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, the sanitary sewer, there's three cul-de-sacs that they're putting in. They have one done, Dunbari Pass. They still need to do the other two cul-de-sacs.
Yeah. I'm on Dunbari Pass. I'm fully aware of what they're doing because my whole house is rattling. So, I'm just wondering when that's going to be done.
Right, so they're going to be moving to Lockwood Court.
Okay.
Which is a longer cul-de-sac, and then up to St. Croix Cove, which is just around the corner and just north of that.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, there's still going to be work going on.
Still going great, thanks.
And then when they start grading the roads and the compactor gets in, you're going to still be feeling vibrations.
That's great. Thanks.
Any questions for Karen? Thank you. New business, consider request by Verizon Wireless for equipment on, at public safety building issue sheet. Mr. Darnold.
About four weeks ago, I received a phone call from Verizon. Said they were looking at possible cell phone tower sites in downtown Hudson, and if the city may be interested in hosting a site. I said, you know, you want to keep it on your list of sites? They, I mean, they go through and they basically qualify or disqualify sites. Sites of the public safety building parking lot was still, they called me last week, said we'd like, really like to explore, see what the feasibility of that is. I said to them, I really need to take this to the council, I mean, the county, you know, we're not going to let you start going into soul-borings testing for feasibility without the council knowing what's going on. The council response is, we're not even interested in doing it. Then after tonight's meeting, I thought we want to tell them. Now, one reason I think the city may want to consider it, if we can get it designed properly, is these are money generators. City of Hudson and Water Utility receives about $225,000 a year from cell phone rental facilities. A site like that may generate, I'm just guessing, in seat of pants, I haven't talked to Verizon about this, could be anywhere from 12, 18,000 dollars a year, which could pay parking costs in downtown Hudson. If that money would go back to the parking fund, that's the reason I think the city ought seriously consider without giving our rights away. And there was an entry agreement, I think Kathy and I would want to take a look at if we still want to explore this, maybe add some language into it. Kathy protects our, that we, you know, we have the right to say no at any point. I talked to Verizon about that, they seem to be open to that. I asked them to send an idea of what they're talking about. I did meet with them yesterday. Basically, there's two parking light posts on the east wall of the parking lot. The one that's further south, what they'd like to do is, is design a monopole that looks something like the parking lot light pole, but extend farther north. There'd be two sectors of antennas on it. One would basically, I think, face west and one northerly. So, there'd be a possibility of having six antennas, two, three on each sector, of which they're basically eight feet tall and eight inches wide. Now, again, 40 feet's the maximum height they were talking about. When they first talked to me yesterday, they wanted this northerly site, which is actually at a lower elevation. If they went up the hill, they might be able to keep the monopole a little bit lower because you're going up the hill. That location also maybe is the best area to be hid because they're, what they're trying to do is go north and west. Going south is not an issue as far as getting reception. So, I guess at this point, I'd like to remain open to working with Verizon, see what's possible with the city retaining the ability to say no at any point, and also having final say on the design and negotiating the actual contract fees if we get to that point.
Thoughts? Any...
I have a question.
Yep?
Not knowing exactly where they want to put it, but it wouldn't be in any of those houses' backyards.
No, no. It's, you know where the retaining wall is on the east side, it'd be on the very south end of that. There's a light post at that. When I talked to them, you know, what they were talking about doing is trying to get soul-borings to go up over the, on the other side of the retaining wall. Now, if there's a negative side to this issue, they've got to have a 10 by, or 12 by 30-foot equipment. Probably three off-street parking spots would be removed. That's the negative.
That's what I was just going to ask you. How many parking spots do we lose?
Three, most likely. So, I mean, that's, and we talked about that. I said, well, that might be a killer for the city. I don't know. But, you know, again, the revenue trade-offs, you may want to take a look at that also.
Are those eight-hour spots right now?
Those are eight hours, and other than evening hours, five, those spots are very seldom taken, but they're heavily used most evenings and during the weekend. So, I mean, they're important locations for the city. So, that's the negative, if there is one. I also talked to them, well, rather than putting the pole up on the other side of the retaining wall, the height's going to stay the same regardless. Maybe it'd be easier if they put it on the edge of one of the parking stalls and did it at the lower elevation, they'd get easier access to built footings and so forth there. Again, I think three stalls would be the maximum that we would potentially lose. I don't know if there could be some excavation, a little bit of the side hills farther south that may allow some of that area to be taken without losing parking stalls. Again, those things would have to be worked out. But at this point, it's just to let you know that they're interested. If the answer is no, I'll relay the answer is no. If not, I think Kathy, if you think it's something pursuing, Kathy and I would talk and maybe write this, write an entry to the point that the city's interests are protected, so.
I'd be interested in it, and I would rather see them dig into that hill to put the tower in.
And I can talk about, to them about all those issues.
Yeah, not lose the parking stalls, yeah, that would...
Well, we'd probably still lose the parking stalls.
Well, I went, you know, I would go into this with the assumption you're going to lose three stalls.
Right.
I don't think you want to go into it any other way.
So, the money that's generated yearly, if we're going to, if we do decide to go forward and lose three stalls, can we specify that? I mean, I know it goes to the parking fund, but can we actually do what we did with like the Jarvis Dock?
Sure.
And put money away from expansion of parking and not just...
Absolutely. If you want, if that's what the council dictates, we certainly could.
Because if we're going to lose parking spots for something, we need to put that.
We need to find a replacement.
We need to compensate that with the expansion.
Okay.
I'm interested. As a Verizon customer, it would be nice to have another tower down downtown.
Nothing like thinking about yourself there.
Yep.
Hey, I'm not the only Verizon customer downtown.
I'm a Verizon customer.
You know, there are spots down here where it cuts out, and it would be nice not to have it.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, just on the testing.
Well, yeah, and again, it's all going to come back to us.
Absolutely. We got to make it crystal clear today, and then it's got to come back to the city for approval.
I'll make a motion to do what needs to be done to test this.
Okay, is there a second?
Danny?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Couple things. We've got the Public Works and EMS proclamations. This is a proclamation for Public Works Week, and it's whereas public work services provided in our community are integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems, programs such as water, sewer, streets, highways, public buildings, solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety and comfort of this community depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the 2013 theme, because of public works, is about the quality of life brought to our communities and around the world. We are able to have clean water, safe streets, neighborhoods, efficient traffic, safe, clean communities because of public works, and whereas we commend the efforts, skills of public work employees dedicated to improving the quality of life for the present and future generations. I therefore, Alan D. Burchill, Mayor of the City of Hudson, Wisconsin, who hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through the 25th, National Public Works Week in the city of Hudson, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involving in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions that public works officials make every day toward our health, safety and comfort and quality of life. And of course, we also have Emergency Medical Week proclamation, whereas the emergency medical services is a vital public service, providing lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas the members of the St. Croix EMS and Rescue, with a roster of 56 EMTs and rescue technicians, of which 20 are the EMT paramedic level, eight of these just recently completed the critical paramedic level, respond to 1,785 calls during 2012. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness and/or injury. And whereas the members of our emergency medical services, whether career or part-time, engage in thousands of hours of specialty training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas the 2013 theme is EMS, One Mission, One Team, which was chosen to emphasize a true team approach that we all practice. I, now, I therefore, I, Alan Burchill, call upon the citizens of Hudson and all patriotic, civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, 2013, has Emergency Medical Services Week, and call upon the citizens of Hudson to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities regarding education and safety issues. With that, I, you know, we get lots of emails, all of us, and, and sometimes we don't acknowledge the folks that work for us and do a really good job for our community. And Tom Zulley and I, and I think Deb got it and Lori got it, it said, it's from a resident here. He said, now that the last snow event is in the week behind us, I just want to extend my thanks and appreciation for the outstanding work your crew did in the past winter with snow removal. First winter working, this is the first winter working downtown Hudson, and I was greeted every day by clear and safe roads. I get to work before seven AM and never had a problem with ice or snow. Please extend my appreciation to the crew. Keep up the good work and have a great summer.
Nice.
It is very nice to get those. And we have a lot of those cases that we don't, our folks do those kinds of things. The Village of North Hudson sent a letter to us wishing us luck on the Fourth of July celebration, but they've decided not to provide any additional funds for fireworks. So we got a response. I also had a request from the Hudson Grocery Cooperative. And it's a new co-op trying to get off the ground here in Hudson, downtown Hudson. And they are looking, I will bring this to finance committee. I just wanted you to be aware of it, to think about it. The Hudson Grocery Cooperative submits its own room tax funding request to the City of Hudson for the amount of eleven-thousand-five-hundred dollars. And the purpose of this is to do a one-time market study to bring the fruition, to bring to fruition the community project of establishing a locally-owned, full-service grocery store in downtown Hudson. So I will bring this to finance for our next meeting to consider. I think we probably would need a grant application filled out. Would that be correct? And that's all I had. Oh, everyone to have a nice Memorial Day weekend. City council people.
We got invited to, I think we all did, the groundbreaking for the bridge. What is that, next, Tuesday? Anyway, I thought people might be interested to know that they're doing that in Lowell Park in St. Louis.
Okay. City attorney. City administrator.
Just real briefly, the city website, as you all know, is up and operational. There is a process, and I know Kurt is signed up for some of them. We do have a notification system. So if there are specific committees you're interested in, you're interested in the parks, you're interested in everything, you want to get agendas, you want to get minutes, we encourage you to go on. And every time an agenda or minutes goes out, you'll be notified, texted. I thought I saw your name on one of them. Maybe not. And we also have Facebook and Twitter account now that similarly, if you befriend the Facebook or if you join our Twitter group, any alert, any agenda, anything that goes on our calendars will be sent off to them immediately, so. And on the agendas, is it everything you want bigger fonts or certain parts of it you want bigger fonts or...
Everything, folks?
I think everything.
That's fine. This is our first time going through it.
I have Lasik in his heart.
That's fine. It's the first time we went through it. We just wanted to, so we'll work on that.
Marty, do you have something you'd like to add?
Yeah, real briefly, next Tuesday morning from eight till about eleven-thirty, downtown Second Street will be shut down between Walnut and Locust Street. They're bringing a crane in to put equipment up on top of the old dibble. So we just want to let everybody know that there's going to be detours at those locations. If you can avoid that area, that'd be fine. We're going to put up signs Monday evening. We'll have no parking areas up in those areas. But just want to let everybody know that Second Street will be shut down just for a few hours while they get this crane to put that equipment up.
Okay.[1694.73]